Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
All right, it's great to see everyone here today. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners work session is now called to order. The date is January 4th, 14th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. Board members, you all received the preliminary items for the agenda for the board meeting. Does any board member have any questions on any of the items for next week's board meeting? All right, seeing none, we will move forward, and we're going to go into our work session agenda items. First, we have our Tax Commissioner, Ms. Danielle. Ms. Danielle, are you here yet?
Okay.
Good, 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 good. And she's going to be talking about House Bill 581. She's going to give us an update, and this is coming from our Tax Commissioner as well as our Chairwoman, because we want to find out where we need to go and how we need to get there. So, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Thank you for having us here. I know this HB 581 is something special for everybody to be dealing with, so we're going to try our best to just provide you an overview to help you in your decision-making process, okay? And then, if you have any further questions, and I may actually have to pull on Mr. Emmett George, our Chief Appraiser, as well, so he can provide some insight as far as HB 581 and the assessment notices, okay?
And can I say also, we have, our mayors are here tonight as well. Let's get, if you, they should be here from our seven cities. Would you please stand to be recognized for our mayors? All right, you may proceed.
Okay. All right, so again, this is for House Bill 581. On the ballot, it was HR 1022, which was merely the parallel language for the actual House bill that passed. So, on the referendum, it was HR 1022, which the people voted in favor of, and now it's up to the board to decide whether or not we'll proceed forward or opt out. HB 581, in short, these are the things that it'll address. There's going to be a revision in the assessment notices, new requirements for me as the Tax Commissioner on your property tax bill. It'll define some things as it pertains to 581, talking about the reappraisal of parcels, the limitations on appeal values, and what this floating homestead means, okay? If you recall, there were three things that were on the legislation this past November. 808 was one of them. HB 808 addressed the cap on personal property taxes for business. This has affected a certain number of parcels. I'll let Mr. Emmett give a little more detail in terms of how that could affect the county, because this is going to go, this is already passed, okay?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Just a little bit on House Bill 808, as we were just getting some data in for Ms. Smith. In 2024, the cap on personal property, if anything, was $7,500 or less, it was tax-exempt. In 2024, we had just over 2,000 accounts, primarily dealing with our boats and things like that, that had a total value of just north of $4.7 million in total 100% value. In 2025, our accounts have a little bit more than doubled. We're about at 41, 4200. They're now exempt because $20,000 is now the threshold. So, basically, almost all of our boats now, we don't have many over that, so that's probably the primary reason most of our accounts now have gone up so much. But the total value of those that are now exempt is 35, a little over $35,800,000. So, that's a difference of a little over $31,154,000, to be exact. The taxable value is about a little over 12, about $12.5 million. So, just to kind of give you some rough numbers of how this House bill affects, the county at the current millage rate is going to be about $200,000 less. The fire is about $51,000 to $52,000 less, and the school is about $245,000 less in collecting. That's just based on the House Bill 808. So, just to kind of give you the numbers on that particular.
Is that just the first year, or?
That will, every year, they have to, so, like all the boats, DNR sends us values every year, so we download those. Businesses send in their returns. We've just opened that return season up, so by April 1st, we'll know. Those numbers can be a little bit subject to change, but as of right now, our carryover values, things we've gotten from DNR on boats and different things like that, that's where we're coming up with these first numbers. As returns start coming in up until April 1, they could change plus or minus somewhat, but that is where we stand as of this date.
I just asked him to stay close, because I know he's going to have to chime in again, okay? He already talked about the provisions of 808. That exemption is now, the threshold is higher than what it used to be. 1022, again, was just the parallel language for HB 581, okay? That proposed a constitutional amendment to authorize the statewide homestead exemption, okay? In short, it passed, and so HB 581 is in effect, and there is an opt-out provision if the board so desires, okay? I'm not going to go in detail on all these slides, because it's probably not necessary. In short, the tax bill is going to have to be revised if we are opted in for any reason to advise residents of any tax increase. There's specific wording that the Department of Revenue has advised us that we have to put on the bill. For some folks' tax bill, depending on the jurisdiction, those bills could end up multiple pages, depending on how many different jurisdictions they bill for. The notice of assessment will be revised. I think the biggest part of the notice of assessment is the estimated property tax will no longer be on the assessment, right? But you'll have to have an estimated rollback rate.
So, yes, the notice of assessments that we send out at the end of April every year, and since 2009, House Bill 346 put into the language where it provided Section C on the tax bill, which was an estimate of taxes based on the previous year's millage rate, because at that time, we don't have the current. But based on that current value, it would estimate a tax. Going forward, that estimate of tax is now gone. 581 removes, basically, all the provisions of House Bill 346. The only thing in its place is each taxing district, and when I mean taxing district, county, fire, school, municipalities. We would have to list their estimated rollback millage rate. It isn't the final rollback millage rate that we eventually proposed to the board that comes from Finance later in June and different things like that. This is just an estimate at that time. It will have no estimate of taxes. It's going to be a little bit confusing, but it will just have an estimated rollback millage rate. Our plan from our office, along with doing, I've already done coffee with a librarian, but other events, we will have a lot of definitions that go out with our notice of assessment so that everybody understands what this is going forward. So, but that is happening, no matter opt-in or opt-out, the notice of assessment change, the requirement for reappraisal, the property valuation, different increases if they freeze and different things like that. That is happening no matter what, and we are prepared and actually starting to put information out already on that. I'll let you continue with that rest of the day.
And I'll chime in. From the Tax Commissioner's standpoint, it's actually favorable for us that the estimated tax amount is not on the bill. That's a big source of confusion for many of our residents, because they receive that assessment notice and assume that's their bill.
And they start calling us.
Yes, ma'am, yes. So, I think it's actually going to work out favorably for our residents that it's not on there. Well, the estimated rollback is something that's going to have to be further explained to better educate our residents what that rollback means, what it, you know, what does it mean? What is it there for? So, they have a good understanding, and that it's estimated. It's not final until you all vote it in, when it's time to do that over the summer months. And so, but that'll be, again, Mr. George's task, to inform the public about this new item that's on the assessment notice, okay?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And maybe I'm jumping, but if we were to opt out, would we go back to the old process?
No, ma'am.
Not for notice of assessment.
Nope, the assessment notices are what they are. HB 581 is in effect as of January 1, 2025. The only decision that you all have to make is whether or not you're going to opt out. If you don't, then you're automatically opted in.
And what's, well, I'm sure you'll give us.
No, 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 you can ask your question. We'll get to that, though. I don't want to jump ahead. Okay, all right. So, Mr. George has already talked about the notice of assessment. You'll see here, there will be an example of a rollback rate on there for the residents versus getting that information at the time of voting in the millage rate. The one thing we didn't discuss is there is a responsibility of the board. Suppose your estimated rollback ends up lower than what you actually vote in, then you are then responsible to report in detail for each authority that you bill for, why. So, you'll have to report that to the Department of Revenue if, in fact, your voted-in millage rate ends up higher than your estimated millage rate.
We do that, or does the Tax Commissioner do that?
I won't be reporting anything. It'll be on the bill, yes, but in terms of, suppose you vote in a millage rate that's higher than what this estimated rollback rate is, which will happen earlier. Emmett and I talked about this earlier today, the timeline, because everybody's timeline on the Finance side and the Assessor's side kind of gets bumped up now. And so, if that estimated rollback is lower than what you actually vote in in the summertime, you will have to justify why. Right, and it will, I'll get to that part, though. That's, I'll tell you what's going to change on the tax bill. If you happen to vote in a millage rate that's higher, they do require us to specify which authority authorized it. Yeah, and so, there's a responsibility that we'll have to tell the public who voted for a higher millage rate, but it's your, you will have to report as well why.
And just to go in, I think from a conference I was at yesterday, the reporting that she's talking about that has to go to DOR will be part of digest submission, so after we do millage rate votes, it'd be part of all that. So, it's something that somewhat is already done, our reporting of why we do with the PT 32 for rollback millage rate. There'll just be some inclusion onto the whys part of that.
All right, I'm not going to, again, go over the notice of assessment. We already discussed the items that'll be removed from the assessment and what'll be added to. Adding a new code section, I mean, we've really gone over this. The gist of the bill is, do we want to vote in and allow for a statewide homestead exemption, something in addition to what we've already had in place, okay? Here, in addition to the requirements regarding the ad valorem tax, you have to include, this is where we start talking about the property tax bill and any changes thereof. If, in fact, there's going to be an increase in mill rate versus your estimated mill rate, the adopted mill rate, this is specific verbiage that I put in bold, that they are requiring Tax Commissioners to put on the bill now. And, you know, it's just transparency, I think, is the goal for the public as to what's going on with my bill, because that's always the biggest question. If it exceeds, then a disclaimer including, or included on tax bill stating the name of the governing authority that exceeded the estimated rollback, and that this will result in tax increase. But that specifics that we will have to make room, hopefully, on the current bill if we had to, otherwise, it requires additional pages, which incurs additional costs, et cetera, okay? So, in short, how does the floating exemption work? It's based on a quote-unquote "base" year. For everybody, starting this year, 2024 is their base year. So, whatever that value was for 2024, anyone who already had a homestead exemption, that is their base year. And so, from there, it can only increase a certain amount based on HB 581 above their base year from year to year, okay? I won't go into detail. How is that base year? How will the increase happen? The inflationary rate will determine how high you can increase from year to year. And so, that's what's favorable. The whole goal of this was to protect homeowners and eliminate large spikes in home values going up, and homeowners having unexpected increases in their property tax bill. And so, the inflation rate is based on the annual inflationary index, whatever is determined by the State Revenue Commissioner from year to year, okay? To date, and this is just information we pulled, I heard from Mr. George today that the State Revenue Commissioner should be issuing what that CPI looks like now, okay? This was information we just pulled. As of December 2024, the inflationary rate was 1.9. What that means for us, you know, when we first had this conversation a little while ago, it was estimated at around 3%. So, now, based on numbers from December 2024, that inflation rate was 1.9, okay? And so, that works a little more favorably for the county, okay? Where your cap is not so high. And so, this is just, you know, an estimate. I have to keep stressing, these are just theoreticals. What could this look like for us? If it was at the 3% level, this is just to compare what the current CPI is stated to be at 1.9 versus that 3%, we'd only be looking at a loss, and I hate to say only, because everything is, right? But 902,000 versus some numbers that we previously had calculated some months ago, okay?
Can you further explain why a 1.9% rate would be more favorable to us?
So, the 1.9% versus a 3%, right? If that 3% cap, you could actually tax the resident up to 3%. Now, you could only tax, well, let me make sure I explain that right, because the 1.9% actually caused us to lose less revenue versus that 3% that was estimated previously. Lisa?
And I'd just add, go back to the other slide.
Okay. No. Right there.
I'll just add, so this comparison right here was saying, if the digest right now is at 4.2 billion, right? If he did a reassessment, and there was a 3% increase, then we went down and we said, okay, this is the taxes it would bring in if the digest rose up 3%, it'd give you the 84 billion. If you all opt into a House Bill 581, then we would have to be guided by the 1.9 inflationary. So, of that increase, of that 3%, we could only, of that 3% increase in the digest, we could only use 1.9% of that increase. And so, if you compare the two, 3% increase in the digest as opposed to 1.9%, the loss would be $902,000, okay?
And I think what we estimated before was a lower, it was .3 before. The CPI was, yeah, it was .3. So, now, it's 1.9, okay? But in short, you see the law, the potential loss in revenue to the county. Setting of the inflationary rate, when it says Commissioner, it's the Revenue Commissioner. It's not the Board of Commissioners, it's not the Tax Commissioner, it's the Revenue Commissioner that determines what that rate is going to be. And they have their own formula to set that inflationary rate from year to year. In short, the floating homestead, what is it going to do? It's going to protect against market rate increases. Home values will be restricted and won't be able to go up so high, so fast. The annual rate determined by the Revenue Commissioner, it'll reflect the inflation and deflation on the cost of living in Georgia from, you know, for the calendar year. So, the previous adjusted base year value, they go to the, that's why I said, anybody who was a homesteaded property in 2024, now that this has gone into effect in 2025, they go to the previous year to set their base value, okay? So, everybody coming in in 2025, they're going back to 2024's for the base value, okay? Anyone who comes in subsequently, it's going to revert back to the previous year's value, okay? Did you have anything to add to that? Okay. Again, these are just how is the base year calculated for this particular homestead exemption. It's going to go back to the previous year. So, in 2026, what was the base value for 2025? That's how that's going to be determined. Now, Emmett, I do have a question in terms of new subdivisions, right? Suppose there's a new subdivision for 2025, there is no previous year's value?
Well, they would not be able to apply, because we don't, in 2025, so if they bought the house, let's say you bought a house today, that was new construction, we would actually, you know, you did not own it as of January 1st anyway, so you would, your homestead exemption application would go to next year, which this year's value would be there, so you would always have a previous year value. It's just, because it's always the year after you purchase or apply for homestead, I should say, apply for homestead.
The only thing that would change a current homesteaded property and their value from year to year, like we said, 2025, 2024's value is your base year. How could that possibly change if there's any substantial changes to your property that could alter your value? And I'll let Emmett.
Substantial changes being, let's say, your house right now is $250,000. You put an addition on your house, you've made substantial changes, you've changed square footage, you've changed heated space, finished basements, anything that's changing livable area is a substantial change. Also, substantial changes, basically, if your house goes up $40,000 because the market went up $40,000, that is not substantial change of physical structure. It's if you make changes to your structure, and I'm not saying you painted the shutters or put new gutters or roof on and maintained your house, I'm talking about where you upgraded your house and physically made substantial changes. That's where your base value would be reset.
And then, that would remain the base value for the lifetime of the homestead, okay? The granting of the exemption, everybody who already had a homestead exemption in 2024 is automatically grandfathered in, okay? Whoever already had a homestead has one, whoever didn't, when they apply, that's when they get, and so, they have to come to the Tax Commissioner's office to apply for that homestead, and all of this would kick in for them, okay? Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Are any of their existing exemptions added to this or with this?
So, you're not losing one. This is in addition to.
Addition to, great.
Does the exemption transfer to the subsequent owner? No, okay? So, if Owner A ends up vacating the property for whatever reason, and someone else buys it, doesn't continue on just because it's the property, they'd have to reapply at the new base value at whatever time they applied for the exemption, okay? But it does transfer to a surviving spouse, okay? Again, filing for anybody already in in 2024, automatic, they're already in there. Moving forward, it's the same homestead exemption application requirements. January through April is our normal window, January 1 through April 1. That's for any of our exemptions. Does that mean that that's the only timeframe that you can apply? No, folks can apply all year round. After that April 1 deadline, though, it won't go into effect until the following year. And that's for every exemption. January 1 to April 1 is that window. If they miss that window and come in and apply, that's fine, it just won't go into effect until the following year, okay? So, just a quick recap, filing for the homestead exemption, anybody who had it in 2024, you automatically have it in 2025, okay? And it automatically renews, unless there's some changes to ownership, the homestead applies to your property for the life of your ownership of the property as long as that's your primary residence, okay? And here's the answer to your question, Commissioner. Exemption is in addition to any other homestead exemptions, okay? But not in addition to any other base year floating exemptions, all right? Some counties, surrounding counties, already had floating exemptions in place. We don't. And so, for them, this particular exemption, oh, boy, they have a lot more work to do than we do if they opt in, because now, they have to determine the best of which for their residents to make sure they get the best exemption. Now, the exemption granted if political subdivisions do not opt out, if you don't, we just talked about this, if you don't opt out, you're automatically opted in. We have until March 1 of 2025. And if you want to opt out, we'll get into that next. I'm sure that's coming up on these slides. The advert, here we go. Advertisement and three hearings are required if you want to opt out. So, for all of this to have to be done prior to March 1, 2025, and I know, look, all the other board members, besides the new ones, know the pain it can be to make sure these advertisements get in on time and.
Tight.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and look, Emma said, and their size, right? 30 by, 30 square inches. But we do have to prepare to advertise in a timely manner, so everything is submitted to the DOR by March 1, okay?
You have some more slides, or?
Just a couple. Oh, and the one thing, so, yeah, Ms. Wood wants me to make sure I make clear, if we are opted in, we're in, like, forever. There's no opting back out right now.
So, who's "we"?
Clayton County.
All taxing districts.
All taxing districts. That's entirely up to that local municipality, okay? So, the cities have to decide whether or not they're opting in, and the cities are responsible for the same advertisement that we are bound by. If we're opting out, everyone, whoever it is, a city, the school board, they've already submitted their ads to the news daily in terms of what their intention is, and so, everybody's responsible for their own advertisements.
So, because I was under the impression that this was renewable, this had to be renewed every X amount of years.
Every five years, that's for the FLOST, the floating exemption.
Just for the FLOST?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just for the FLOST. This, if we opt in, you're in for life, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a House bill until a House bill changes the House.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. No, that's it.
Okay, so if you opt in, you're in.
Yes, ma'am.
If you opt out and say, three years or four years, say, hey, you know, maybe we should think twice and opt, I mean, if we opt out and decide later that we want to opt in, is that possible?
Right, so let me say this, unless you opt out, you are in. Period. So, there's no, I'm not going to opt in right now, and I'll opt in maybe later. If you do not opt out by March 1, 2025, you are in.
Okay, but if you opt out by March whatever, whatever?
Then you're asking, can you?
Right.
Are there, I don't remember there being a provision in this particular, now, whether or not they amend it to allow you to opt in at a later time?
Under the current, there was a question that was somewhat similar, asked yesterday, and DOR's response was somewhat vague, but basically said, at this time, they did not see a way that you could opt, have that option to switch back later. Now, pending further changes or rewrites to it, which there probably going to be subsequent coming in a year or two because of some issues, but as of right now, you got, your choice is to opt in or opt out, and whatever that choice is, you right now need to stand with it. It's the way it was kind of put to us.
Yeah, and again, you don't have a choice to opt in. If you don't opt out, you're in, yeah. I do, like Mr. George said, foresee some changes with this, because tax, local, I mean, tax officials throughout the state have many issues with how this all came together.
Sounds like DOR does, too.
Yes, because a lot of it was very unclear to all of us, and so, just like Emma, he's going to trainings, we're going to trainings, there's still a lot of unanswered questions. And so, we can't even effectively communicate everything to you guys, because they're not able to answer those questions for us yet.
Yeah, I was on Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
If you opt out, you're out in five years.
Yeah.
To where the bill's written now. There's some talk about legislation being changed to make it a later.
Mayor Dodson, would you like to come up real quick? Come on.
There's some talk about legislation to extend this time for opting out. But that would have to start in the House of Representatives because that's the tax side of the legislation. Have to be passed there, then have to go to Senate, be passed there, then the governor would have to sign it. And we don't have that much time. Because we're talking about March 1, which is only about six weeks away. So, and no, the way the bill is written right now, if you opt out, you're out for five years. Unless that changes. So, that's all, when I tell you hello, I tell you everything I know. All right, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So I think everybody's clear on that now.
Yeah.
Okay, and he just enlightened us on a piece because neither Emmett or I heard that in training.
I see the mayor doing a facial thing, you want to come?
Also, I want to welcome, also, we have Mayor Motley Brum from College Park. We don't get to see College Park.
We did not get that answer yesterday from the DOR.
Come on, Mayor. And the mayors have been meeting, just to let the constituents know, they have been meeting. Yep, they met today, and so they can bring a lot of clarity to this.
I don't know about a lot of clarity.
But a little clarity, a little clarity. It's okay.
Good afternoon, thank you so much for having us and thank you so much for the invitation so we can all participate in this very important conversation. I just wanted to bring up the point that there's always the opportunity of local legislation for, if, if you chose to opt out at this point, to Mayor Dodson's point, in the, in the 581 to participate in the FLOST, you could, like the five-year window is such. But if you decided two years from now, oh, was, from a policy perspective, this is something that we want to do because you opt out and people are going to other counties because they opted in and you say, oh, well, we want people to come here with the, and have a floating homestead. That's something you could do through, through state, through local. That, that's the only point that I wanted to go, I'm going to go back to the back.
Thank you for that clarity.
All right, so back to the advertisements. Specific verbiage, again, they do identify what that verbiage needs to be. Okay, and so we'll share that with you, but the governing authority has to identify and host three hearings. Just like we do at digest time, you've got to have three hearings advising the public of what your intent is if it is to opt out. Again, this, you don't have to do anything to opt in. If you're going to opt out, you have to have those three hearings. At least one has to be between 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, and on a weekday, which, yeah. But this here is the verbiage in short, and they are specific. Now, I will say this, DOR is not the authority over these particular, in terms of anything but size. I think they are all being scrutin, you know, they're going to scrutinize the size. It's got to be 30 square inches to ensure it's visible and not in the legal section of the advertising newspaper. Here it is, here, 30 square inches, not in the legal section. Okay, they just want to ensure the public can easily identify what is going on. Okay. The resolution has to be filed by March 1. Okay, the resolution has to be filed. So that means you've got to decide what you're going to do, have your hearings, all that good stuff, and file this resolution with the Secretary of State by March 1. Okay, that was just Kenny Colson. Anybody who's had to deal with him knows what that newspaper picture was. Anyway, just to recap, the base year assessed value is for the previous year. So whenever a homestead comes into effect, their base value will be for the previous year. Inflationary growth cap, the base year value may increase year by year by the CPI. Whatever is determined annually by the State Revenue Commissioner, that'll be the new threshold for us. Okay, if there's already a floating exemption in place, then the taxpayer is going to receive whichever is the best. Okay, whichever works in the taxpayer's favor. This new floating exemption is in addition to, not in lieu of, anything they already have in place. Okay. That's old because it's already passed January 1. Application for homesteads, for any of our residents who didn't know, but I think everybody does. You apply at the Tax Commissioner's Office. You can apply online now. Okay, this is where the FLOST comes in. And so, and I spoke with Department of Revenue today, so that floating lost. But this would require everybody to be on the same page and opt in. Right, that includes the Board of Commissioners and all cities. If one city opted out, we're all out. So there is no FLOST unless everybody is opted in and everybody agrees on the FLOST. And if in fact, there's an agreement that there's going to be a FLOST, this just identifies what that half cent percent or increase would be. But there is an IGA that would have to be drafted for everybody, identifying that everybody's in, number one. And what does the dispersment look like for the BOC and for those cities that are in? Okay.
So if we totally opt out, if we decide to opt out.
Then it's done.
That's it.
Everybody would have to be in. Even if one entity is out, everybody's out.
So we can't try to unilaterally rejoin or anything at a later date? Okay.
Now, after five years maybe, is that what you were saying?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, locally, you can create any exemption you want. Right, the board could make that decision and make their own local legislation outside of HB 581.
Okay.
But in terms of HB 581, you're either all in or everybody's out.
So how does this affect the lost?
This is a separate, this is a floating lost. Yeah, it's totally separate. Right, and so the purpose of the FLOST, which that's what they call it, the floating loss is to offset what you're losing in revenue because of the exemption. Okay, and so if it's implemented, you're to recoup some of that with that sales tax.
Okay.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think that's on here. Any funds that, suppose we did all opt in, everybody was on the same page, there's going to be a FLOST. Any monies generated from that FLOST have to go back to the residents. And it has to be identified on their bill, what went back to them from that FLOST. And then the State Revenue Commissioner has the right to deny our digest if we didn't. Which, that creates a whole new level of problems. Okay, but if there was an IGA, it would have to go to local referendum, everybody would have to vote on it, et cetera. Okay.
Oh, Tax Commissioner, can you clarify? So you, you mentioned that any money generated from the FLOST would be listed on the tax bill. So what about for those who are not property owners? Can you explain like how?
Well, anybody who's not a property owner wouldn't get a property tax bill.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, the FLOST though. That's for sales tax, correct?
Right.
This is all for homesteaded properties.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right, and so it's only going to apply to those folks who have a current homestead. Okay.
And you said 2025, if they come in.
If they already had a homestead exemption in 2024, they'd automatically get it starting this year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay. After the vote, the IGA must also specify, like I said, what portion of the proceeds go to. Now, this is where we had a question today. I spoke with DOR and she's polite, she said, I'm going to get you some phone numbers. Because she wants us to talk to ACCG further. This kind of specified the portion of the proceeds that's going to go to the cities, not on the IGA. Like if there was, suppose one of our local cities had a 0% sales tax or something, right? Is this stating that they still have to be a part of the IGA? Or even if they weren't, because they don't collect the tax, are they entitled to a portion of the proceeds? And how do you, based on their population, this looks like they still will get a portion of the FLOST proceeds.
Correct. That was discussed a lot within ACCG. And we're under, I'm under the assumption that the answer is yes.
I think so too, yeah. All right, and so in terms of when that tax collection would begin, you know, more than 50 days after the, it would start the next quarter after you voted in or after that IGA is submitted and it's voted in on referendum. Okay. And you guys see how that money would be distributed. The DOR will send the money to the county and the county is responsible for dispersing the money to the cities in accordance with the IGA that you develop if so. Okay. How can the tax be renewed? So maybe this will answer a little better. The tax can run up to five years. That's the FLOST. Okay, up to five years prior to the expiration. If we're in the FLOST, then you could renew it. Okay. Let me see here, and that's it? I think that's all we got. Lisa gave us some financials, but in short, yeah, in short, right? That was long. We're trying to give you as much information as possible so you can make the decision that you feel is best.
Well, I just want to say thank you all for coming because again, we're going to be, have to do a lot of collaboration. We just had our other mayor, Jonesboro Mayor, Danya Sardar, to come in. Please stand, you could just raise your hand to be recognized or stand. And again, I brought everyone here tonight because we have to have this collaboration. There's a lot of misnomers, there's some things that we definitely all need to understand. And so as we move through this, we need to make sure that we're ready to make a decision. I know for a fact our COO and DCOO have been moving, putting some things together for the board. And so we are ready to move forward. And we will continue to discuss some things as we move forward. And did you want to say anything, Mr. Stanford, in regards to either one of these bills?
No ma'am.
Listen, you know, like I said, it's a, it's a learning curve for everybody, you know. It's, a lot was put out there and, you know, we're all seeing where we're going to go. And so I know the mayors have had a lot of discussion today. And some of our mayors, they have, you know, made their mind up where they're going to go. But again, we, we have to just decide as a board, and so.
All seriousness, yes ma'am, all seriousness. We have talked preliminarily about the three dates for the public meeting in anticipation of the board's decision. That information will be forthcoming to you all on Friday. Make sure you go with the dates and then our clerk will post those dates. So we'll make sure we send it out to all our, our local leadership as well, so they'll know when we're posting our dates. And outside of that, I think we're ready to rock and roll.
All right. All right, is there anything else? All right, thank you for your presentation. All right, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the, the next item on our agenda for tonight. And it will be from the Flint River Boys and Girls Club. There'll be an update and this is put on the agenda from Commissioner Tasha Allen and President and CEO David Jernigan. And it's so good to see you, Mr. Jernigan.
Unfortunately, I'm not here to talk about flossing or digest. Talking about kids today.
And thank you to all the mayors too, as you all exited. I appreciate you all coming out to collaborate with us tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, good to see you all. And thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I have with me, Ms. Amelia Davis, our Regional Director with Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Atlanta, who actually started our Flint River Club, is the first executive director. And Mr. Michael Maxwell is going to be presenting as well, as the Executive Director of our club here in Clayton County. We're here tonight, you know, really to say thank you as well as to educate the community on the great work happening at our Flint River Community Center Boys and Girls Club. Before I jump into that, as President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Atlanta, I want to give you a little context about our organization and the work that's happening here in Clayton County. And I want to start by just saying, this is a county, as I go across our 10-county footprint, that I really hold up as an example for other communities. The work that you all are doing and the investment that you're making in kids here in Clayton County, I think is a great example for other municipalities. And we're really proud to call you a partner and to be, have done some work in this community for the last several years. So our mission as an organization is to ignite the unlimited potential of kids and teens. And we do that by creating safe, inclusive, and engaging environments. As I mentioned before, we're in 10 counties across Metro Atlanta. And we are proud to have a site here in Clayton. We do, as you, you probably are familiar with this map, this is the United Ways Child Wellbeing Index. And when we think about our physical footprint, we really try to be in the areas of greatest opportunity in Metro Atlanta. I mean, so you can see where our clubs are relative to that. I'll also point out that kids here in Clayton County also have access to our residential campsite, which is up in Danielsville, Georgia, 160-acre residential camp that kids go to over the summer. Is another opportunity that they have as part of being with the Boys and Girls Clubs. So across Metro Atlanta, we serve 7,000 kids. One of the things that's unique about Boys and Girls Clubs is we serve kids from 6 to 18 years old. And as a former K-12 educator, I can tell you that often educators see kids for a couple of grades, maybe three grades. But it's very uncommon to be able to serve a young person, really end up partnering with families all through their childhood and be a part of their village through their childhood. And that's the unique opportunity we have at a Boys and Girls Club. You can see the demographics that we serve across Metro Atlanta. And the average annual household income for families that we serve is nearly, less than 30,000, nearly half of our families. So we are focused on serving families that otherwise couldn't afford to be able to send their kids to a safe space in the after-school hours. And so we really provide that for, for families across our footprint. This is our formula for impact. When we think about our, the work that we're doing across Metro Atlanta and here in Clayton County specifically, we really have a holistic approach. And I tell people, you know, I used to, as a principal, I used to send my kids to the local club down the street. And I honestly, until I sat in this seat, did not have a full appreciation for all the things that happen in a Boys and Girls Club every day. And you're going to get to hear some of the details in just a moment. But what I'll say is there are a lot of out-of-school programs that serve kids in the arts, that are focused on just academics, that are focused on just sports. The great thing about a Boys and Girls Club is you get all of those things. And if you walk into our club and you ask a kid, what's your favorite thing about the club experience? For one kid, it's the dance program. For another kid, it's the sports. For another kid, it's the academic support they get. But truly, young people have opportunity to access academic success, character and leadership, and healthy lifestyles programming every day in our clubs. And we are open from, at the end of the school day until 8 o'clock every afternoon, which is another service that families really appreciate in this critical out-of-school hours. I've mentioned the, the programmatic model and how we serve. And I'll just point out on this slide, these are some of the details of what that looks like in a club. And you'll get some more specifics for the Flint River Club. But undergirding all of that is a real focus on college and career readiness. It's our hope that when a young person leaves our club, we've positioned them to have a choiceful life. We've exposed them to things, we've taken them on college-filled trips, we've exposed them to career opportunities and that they really are well-positioned in partnership with schools and families to live choiceful lives. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Amelia Davis, who will give you a little more context on the history of our club here in Clayton County.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. It's David Mitch, and I'm Amelia Davis. I'm the Regional Director that serves the Clayton County Club, the Flint River Club. And like you said, the club opened in February of 2021. And we opened just a small, with a small group of kids. We opened on COVID, so we opened within hubs. And we served only 24 kids at that time in our hub. As we opened the club in Flint River, opened our blue doors. And we opened that club with the help of the Clayton County Commission's Board and the Clayton County, in partnership with the Clayton County Schools. And over the past four years, the club has really grown to now serving close to 250 kids yearly with an average of about 60 to 65 kids coming in our doors every day. And the really, the thing that I love most about that is that we serve teens at our clubs. And we have about 50 teens registered and on an average about 20 to 25 of those teens. So half of those teens are coming in our building every day to engage in programming. That, that, in our three outcomes that David mentioned, is academic success, character and leadership, and healthy lifestyles, which includes our sports programs and things like that. So the club has grown immensely. We're excited to continue to be here and we're excited that the growth that the club has continued to, continue to see. And so I'll pass it over to your current Executive Director, Mr. Michael. He's going to tell you a little bit more details about the program and what the club day looks like for our members that come through the building.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, thank you for having us. So what I want to do is just talk about the day-to-day aspects of, of the club. To introduce myself, my name is Michael Maxwell and I've been working with Boys and Girls Club for over 28 years. And I've been at the Flint River location for going on three years now. So the makeup of the club is, we have one full-time person, which is myself. And then we have eight part-time staff. In that eight part-time staff, we have two academic support coaches that come from the Clayton County Schools. We have one that, you know, we have to have one that is, is, is a certified teacher. So we do get, the kids do get that extra help in tutoring and stuff from them. So we partner with five schools. We pick up from Point South Elementary, Brown's Elementary, Point South Middle School, and Monday's Mill Middle School. But we are open to all of Clayton County schools. We do have kids that come. Uh, we do have kids that, um, um, in a variety of ways to the program. Our operating hours, um, are Monday through Friday from 2:30 to 8:00. We also do winter break, summer camps, um, uh, fall breaks, different things like that. And we're there from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Um, our membership, uh, we have membership, uh, from six to 18 years old. If you're 18 and still in high school, then you are eligible to, uh, come to the Boys and Girls Club. Our daily programs, um, just a day in the life of the club, we have enrichment hour, triple play, dance, smart girls, positive action, we do flag football, martial arts, um, and as, uh, mentioned earlier, career and college readiness programs. One of our biggest programs, uh, and one of the programs that we are most, um, proud of is our Youth of the Year program. Um, one of our, uh, it's one of the highest honors that a, a member can achieve. Members must exemplify good club, uh, good club and community service, leadership, and good academic achievement to be considered for our Youth of the Year. Uh, we also have a Junior Youth of the Year program. Our Junior Youth of the Year, uh, is for teens in middle school, seventh, uh, and eighth grade. And our Youth of the Year is for ninth grade and up, okay? Um, so this year is, and I also want to thank you guys for recognizing, uh, our Junior Youth of the Year and Youth of the Year, uh, uh, just a, a week ago, right? Yes. Um, and so just to kind of recap really quick, um, our 2024, 25 Youth of the Year was Ms. Luis Davis. Um, and our Junior Youth of the Year, who not only represented the Flint River Club, but also went, uh, and, and is representing all 26 clubs, um, in Metro Atlanta, okay? So we're very proud of that. All right, thank you.
All right, and to wrap up here, as, as you all know, we are here tonight because you are partners with us. And I want to just end by saying, um, in addition to the partnership we have with the county, we have a lot of representative, representation from local churches, uh, companies, um, and other, um, entities throughout Metro, or throughout Clayton County that are part of our Advisory Board. Um, as you all know, this club exists as part of a larger community center, the Flint River Community Center. I mean, so it's an important part of our strategy to be a part of that community center, as well as some local champions that help make, um, the programming come to life every day in our club. Uh, so just want to acknowledge them as we wrap up here and we are open to any questions you might have.
All right, board members, I'd like to, um, open up the floors at this time for you to be recognized for questions.
A quick question. Can you give us an update on, um, the waitlist for this club?
Yes, this is a club, I will just say, across our footprint, that is consistently, um, oversubscribed, where we often have more kids than we can serve. And you can give the details around that. In the past, it's been more than a few hundred kids on the waitlist, I believe.
Uh, yes. Um, so right now, we do have, um, we have about 40 kids that are on the waiting list. Um, now, we are in the process now going through, uh, because in January, once the new year comes, we sometimes do have, uh, you know, kids that move away and different things. So we are going through right now to see, um, how we can get those kids in, so, yes.
And, uh, one last thing, I would like to encourage all of you in the audience, the citizens, as well as my fellow board members, to take some time out of your day just to volunteer and visit the center. Uh, you know, they do close at eight, so maybe after dinner, that'll be great.
We would welcome that.
Thank you. All right, does that complete everything, Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
All right, thank you for your presentation. It was awesome. And again, we will get out there and visit. Yeah, all right, next on the agenda is going to be retiree benefits. Um, we will have, that will come from Director Tori Strauter-Tanks, and she will be discussing free senior and recreation center memberships. And I heard the free part.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. So this is a very brief presentation. Um, this actually was an idea of an employee for Clayton, Clayton County that came to us to propose this idea. So this is a collaboration between our wonderful HR department, Parks and Rec, and Senior Services. And so what we're requesting is for retirees to have a lifetime membership to our recreation and senior centers. And this will be for all free classes. It will be for the use of fitness equipment, swimming pools, indoor walking tracks, um, excluding, um, Spotty Splash.
Board members, are there any, is that it? That was good. All right, I'm, I'm gonna open up the floor for questions. Commissioner Hambrick?
Like retirees of, just retirees in general?
Clayton County, Clayton County retirees, I'm sorry. My bad, Clayton County retirees.
Mr. Davis? Commissioner Reeves, you have a question?
Does this incur any additional costs from the county?
No, so the membership badge is nominal. This is why it's coming from Senior Services. The badge is only costs $1, so it's a nominal cost. And so the retiree, if they lost the badge, they will have to pay $5 for the replacement badge. And this badge is interchangeable with Parks and Rec. So if they have a Senior Services badge, they can go into the rec centers as well.
Commissioner Allen, you have any questions? Any more questions at this time?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
We're talking retirees now, so is that just leaving the county or is that a retirement from the county?
A retirement from the county. They go through the HR process. So what will happen is they will go through the process with HR. They will send that list to Senior Services, so our staff, our team would have that list of, you know, the retirees, and we will process their, um, membership passes.
Okay, now what if they don't live in the county?
Um, it is for our retirees. That's why the numbers are there, is 15, 1,586 that are not Clayton County residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, uh, number four will be the reorganization of Central Services. And that will come from Director Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
And, uh, Carol.
I am not Carol Rogers, by the way.
And, uh, DCOO Landry Markinson as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Um, so I did want to come up, um, with Ms. Rogers tonight to address this issue. Um, we don't typically like to bring staffing issues outside of the budget process. However, when other processes arise that cause issues within one of our operational, um, divisions, we feel the need to bring it to you, um, so, so we can address it. Yes, ma'am. So, um, and, and that's the reason why, um, I, I worked with Ms. Carol and told her I would, I would kick this off, um, this evening just to kind of explain why we're here, um, outside of the budget process. So, um, if you remember, um, back in February, um, of last year, ahead of the, um, the budget process, we brought a comprehensive reorganization of Central Services to the board. And we talked through some of the things that we would be looking for during the budget process, as well as, um, some of the challenges that Central Services was having and how that was having a corresponding waterfall effect throughout the operations of the entire county. Um, and we kind of talked through, um, what some of those, um, options could be and some of the things that we could do immediately to try to help free up some personnel in Central Services. Um, this board was gracious enough to approve, um, that, that reorganization in the most recent budget. And Ms. Rogers has worked diligently to get that implemented. Um, one of the things that we have not yet been able to pull the trigger on though, um, is the implementation of, of purchase cards. And if you'll kind of remember, we talked about what our current resolution, um, and procurement code allows us to do. And we walked you through kind of what the requisitions for those fiscal years were and what percentage of those was less than $5,000. And why that becomes key is per our purchasing codes, department heads have the authority to purchase up to $5,000, um, given current mechanisms. And one of the things that we brought forth was a pilot, um, with purchasing cards that would allow department heads, um, to exercise their already board-given, um, authority to make those purchases. And then that would be, as you can just see in fiscal year '23, that would be roughly 8,100 purchases that Central Service did not have to process, um, which would free up their people to handle the contracts and the RFPs and some of the things that were languishing. So the purchasing cards are already in our system. Um, they're authorized by the county's procurement code. And this was the same thing that we laid out, um, back in the February presentation. I mean, it kind of lays out how it would work, what our, um, what our thought processes were around, um, the pilot program. And one of the things that I wanted to point out is, back when COVID hit, um, and we kind of had to change the way that we did businesses, a lot of businesses during COVID quit taking purchase orders. Um, and they quit taking a lot of the ways that government procured things. Um, if you didn't either have cash or a credit card on hand, they hung up on you. Um, now that we're out of COVID, um, we've gone back to the way we did business, however, industry has not. Um, they still, you know, credit cards is the way a lot of them do business, so it's becoming increasingly challenging, um, to procure goods and services off purchase orders, um, and just kind of how government has historically, um, conducted business. So, um, uh, back during COVID, if you remember, for those that were on the board, the county, um, made a decision to allow us to use the county credit card at that point for purchases. And we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in a very short period of time with no issues. Um, we were able to account for every single penny where it went. Um, and we were able, quite frankly, to do things because of that change that no other government around us did. Um, we provided widespread employee testing, which other people couldn't do. Um, but it's because we had the flexibility to move quickly, um, and acquire goods and services while they were available. Um, so that's kind of what we laid out to the board. Um, we're back before you again this evening because we have a new challenge, um, that's, um, Ms. Rogers is facing. And, um, I'm gonna let her walk you through that and what her request is to be able to address that. So, Ms. Carol?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Thank you once again, DCOO. Um, so pretty much where we're at is that we are in the process and I want to, once again, thank you all for the reorg. Um, it was a great, uh, tool for Central Services. And I want to talk a little bit about how that reorg and the tools that we're using now, how it affects our requests. So just coming up to the point of where we're at now, uh, we are looking at a new process change for our invoices. So basically, um, Finance, this was effective on 12/5/24. They no longer will process direct entry invoices for check requests. So when you look at a process, um, for procurement and certainly for Finance, it is always a three-point match. So you would have a purchase order, you would have a receiver, meaning the user department, receive that item, and then Finance will process a check. That is the perfect way that we should always be purchasing within Clayton County, working alongside with Finance and our user departments. Um, so to kind of bring that in line of what we need to do, um, those check requests are not going through that procurement process. Okay, so what we're asking for is, since this has been changed, um, Finance is requiring purchase orders or contracts as needed. So that puts an additional burden on Central Services. As you can see, what we were purchasing prior to this change, that means we're gonna have an increase of purchase orders as well as contracts. So my request today, along with, um, the information, is asking for additional legal staff. We have our own attorney within Central Services, so we have a Central Service Staff Attorney. There is no admin that assists her at all. So I'm gonna go a little deeper into how this change affects her, uh, specifically. So the request is for the paralegal. So the reason why is that, with, you're talking about additional contracts and professional service agreements, I want to give you some numbers briefly on what that person, uh, Ms. Williams, our attorney, is actually doing now. So we're doing 200-plus contracts per year. That does not include amendments, change orders, which is probably another 100. We do our own, um, or open records requests, which will be anywhere from 75 to 100 per year. Um, we're also doing demand letters. And so the, what we approved last year, what you all gave us, we started a contracts administration plan. The county has never had that. That means that once that contract is issued, that's when the work starts for that subdivision. Before, it was, a lot of that work was on the user department. Um, that's not their forte, so to speak, and it's not something that legal would do. It is something that a project manager within procurement would do. That is the industry standard. So we actually started that with the assistance of you all giving us that additional position. But what that means is that now there's more work to do. Because if there's issues with that contract, we have to send demand letters out. We have to make sure that we can do cure letters. We have to meet with vendors and discuss that. So this is one person that's handling all of that at one time. There is no paralegal, there's no administrative staff to do the letters, all those things that need to be done to make sure that we can have a robust co- contract administration plan. But on top of that, making sure that we addition, uh, we discuss and we make sure that we have the best needs of the county. So briefly, I want to just kind of, kind of go through this. So without that additional help, um, for the paralegal, with the change that we have with the invoice, with the addition of the contracts administration plan, we will have an increased workload, which would lead to slower production. So that means that on our side, it's gonna take us longer to get through those contracts to make sure that the user departments have what they need. Everything that we do is on a timeline, whether it's a grant project, where we have to spend money within a certain deadline, whether it's a contract, all of it is for needs, everything is on a deadline. Um, so what we don't want to happen is have any delay of goods and services for our user department, which ultimately will trickle down and affect our citizens of the county. So, uh, this is the final part, and this is just to cost off, the cost out for the paralegal, um, just to go, to show you the numbers. So I did put this in my budget request for fiscal year '26, but due to the changes, um, we're gearing up on SPOSS projects. I'm really glad to see the county moving forward with, um, increasing our services and our goods. But there is that effect that happens directly to Central Services because everyone should be coming through Central Services. As the chief spoke, we have centralized and decentralized purchasing. That decentralizes only for the $5,000. So the thought is to remove those smaller items so that my team can focus on those bigger items, which is your grant projects, which is your contracts for your, um, public works projects. That's where I want us to focus on. And most importantly, the contracts administration plan. I think it's important that we hold these contractors to what we tell them they need to do. And that cap plan was developed. We're having the documents, we actually had someone come in that's very familiar with that, um, to consult with us, to actually deliver that plan. So it's important that we have someone in that space that can address all those needs for us.
Is that it? All right, I'm going to just call, roll call down from, um, from my right to my left. Um, Commissioner Reeves, do you have any questions at this time?
Oh, I was.
My question is about where, um, where in the budget, uh, this item would come from. And that might be a question for our interim CFO.
Um, I don't think, you, you could come up.
And we, we're requesting out of the general fund, obviously, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Hey, um, good afternoon, or good evening. Um, what specific item are you talking about? The additional personnel?
Yes, the additional personnel.
Okay, so that would, um, be an increase to the, um, general fund and come out of, um, the additional positions that they asked for during the budget process? Does that answer your question?
It does, yes, thank you.
Um, I do want to add that, um, the direct entry should not directly affect, um, Central Services. That is something that we have put in place upstairs for quite a while. We have been doing direct entry on invoices that were sent over to Central Services, I mean, sent over to Finance. And they are bypassing the authorization process. So what we have actually implemented is, we are sending those invoices back to the departments and making them enter the check request. That way, they go through a supervisor for authorization. So, um, we are pushing back on items that come in that are over 5,000, and we are pushing those towards POs, just because they are violating the purchasing process. I just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm good. Commissioner Allen?
Yes, um, can you give us an example of an unmet project that, um, we missed the deadline because of lack of having this person here?
Right, so when we look at our projects, there's a few things that we look at. We obviously have our contracts that are annual contracts. So you all may see me coming back, bringing a contract for an extension. It is because part of that was a staff issue, right? Making sure we have enough people that can procure that. So we would have to extend the contract out versus going back out to put it out for procurement. Um, another situation could be anything where there's a project in queue, right? And we need a contract for it. The user department, when they provide their documents to us, they tell us when they need that project by. So they may say, "Okay, Carol, I need that project by March 2025." So part of what we have to do is ensure that we can get it to you all on time, but that requires a contract. So if the contract has to be negotiated, that's who works with us, our legal team, to ensure that we have the best, um, terms and conditions for the county. So we may miss that deadline, which in turn... So we may miss that deadline, which in turn, obviously, when we look at it, it may be a service that is needed. You know, it could be anything from roadway to architect engineering services. It could be a construction project, it just depends.
Okay, and then that answered my next question, because I was going to ask how does this affect the citizens? But when you said roadway, I already knew.
Right, it could be anything, because we are a service-oriented department. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Hamper?
No questions.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I have two. First one, that five thousand dollar limit, when was that implemented?
That was put in the code in, I think it was two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, and the reason I ask that, well, going to the second part is, so we need the legal. So my question with that, two thousand seventeen goods were at, let's just say, base level zero. They've gone up to base level fifty now. If that purchase order increase was increased to seventy-five hundred, how would that affect you, especially moving forward for the rest of the year? Considering, you know, like Commissioner Haberka said, for many years, as far as bringing these in during the middle of the budget, would that be again to assist?
So I think, and excuse me, so part of the, part of the, part when you deal with the decentralizing is that the way that the code reads, it decentralizes the purchase, but it's in conjunction with having a P card. So what happens is even if the user department is authorized to use seventy-five hundred, if they call a vendor and they say, look, I want to purchase goods for you for seventy-five hundred. If the vendor is not willing to invoice, there's no way to order that. So we would have to do the purchase order, so we're still back in that loop again.
Correct, but then going backwards a little bit and saying, look, we relaxed that, the entry, and go back and accept that now. I'm just looking at how we can offset this somewhat for the immediate near future, immediate and near future.
Right, so with the P card, I think that does offset that because that does take some of those items outside of Central Services, and it does free up staff that perhaps could assist our Staff Attorney with some of the items that we do. Because what she's dealing with is anything that requires a contract. So that may not, you know, necessarily be any goods or commodities. But certainly that would free staff up, you know, for some assistance until we can get that person on board when we're looking at the new budget in July. Yes.
And I think also Commissioner Davis too, that was part of our, our thought process behind the pilot was, let's do a pilot program with three of our larger or four of our larger power purchasers, so to speak, that being fire, PD, building and maintenance, transportation and development, and see what kind of impact that has on Ms. Rogers. To your point, that's been in the ordinance for quite some time, we've just never implemented it. And the ordinance has some checks and balances to, to ensure that things are done properly. And with the accountability stream, if you remember, the board gave the Office of the COO additional authority when it comes to disciplining of department heads for policy violations and the like. So, you know, if we saw where the, the P card program was not being utilized, then we have mechanisms to deal with that as well. But what we're seeing is we kind of have some things in place that could, to your point, offset some of these requests. We're just not utilizing them.
And that's kind of where I am right now, is I believe we need to begin to look at utilization of some of this, relaxing certain points, increasing certain points to begin to balance us out from that, from that ask.
All right, well, thank you. And board members, thank you for the information tonight. And we will make our decision from there. Do you have anything? Next week.
Yes, ma'am, it would be our intent to put it on the agenda for next week.
All right, any other questions at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, all right, item five will be tabled for another day, so we're going to move on from there. So it will be removed from the agenda. And we're going to move on to item six, the needs assessment for jail management and court management systems. That will come from our CIO, Jamie Montalvo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and Board. My name is Jamie Montalvo. I'm the Chief Information Officer for the Department of Information Technology. And I'm here in conjunction with Gartner to discuss the results from the needs assessment for the jail and court management system. Just to give you a little history of how we got here, in February of two thousand twenty, it was decided that we would build a customized software development project to replace our current courts and jail management system. In May of two thousand twenty-one, the jury system was completed. In November of two thousand twenty-two, the LEETS, or Law Enforcement Employee Tracking System, was completed. That was out of the scope of the project assessed for Clayton County Police Department. In June of two thousand twenty-three, the criminal warrant and warrant list arrest modules were completed for magistrate court. In October of two thousand twenty-three, the first appearance module was completed for magistrate court. So overall, it was about thirty percent of the total project completed. So in May of two thousand twenty-four, due to funding constraints and timing, it was decided to end that software development project. So in August of two thousand twenty-four, the board approved Gartner to come in and do a needs assessment for the courts and the sheriff's offices. Tonight I have with me Noel Gale, Chris Linton and Paul Weiser, and I'm going to turn over the presentation to them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Appreciate your time this evening to spend a few minutes getting educated on what we've done, what we see, and what we'd like to recommend to the Clayton County Commission going forward.
Please state your name one more time for me.
Pardon?
Please state your name.
My name is Noel Gale.
Okay, Noel Gale.
And before I go any further, I'll introduce my compadres with me, Chris Linton and Paul Weis. I've been with Gartner for about ten years now. I've been in IT for about thirty years. I've been doing ERP in big projects, probably in about thirty countries at this point in my career. Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Noel. My name is Paul Weiser. I'm a managing partner with, in the Public Safety and Justice Group within Gartner Consulting. And I've been doing this for about twenty-five years. And my team and I, or our teams, and we make sure that typically what, we do the right thing with IT and investments, and we get the value out of these investments for the agencies we serve.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for having us here this evening. Chris Linton, also a managing partner within the Public Safety and Justice Team for Gartner. And myself, I've been in the technology advisory business for about twenty-five years now, doing exactly these kinds of things, independent assessments from, from all aspects, from the federal down through county and, and local jurisdictions across law enforcement, community, jail and, and the courts.
Thank you.
So one of the things that you'll see tonight is that we bring a lot of experience to the table, and Gartner takes a slightly different approach than other consulting groups that you might have in front of you. We represent no vendor. We're agnostic. So we look across the market space as far as what's going on with all the vendors in technology. Gartner was born out of research and advisory. We represent the consulting group, which leverages that research and advisory information across our entire customer base and entire market base to provide the best approach for the clients that we serve. So about Gartner, we're the largest research and advisory company. We were founded in seventy-nine, nearly twenty thousand associates, six point one billion in revenue. We grow every quarter. We have about eighteen thousand distinct organizations that we serve. We primarily deal with C-suite people like Jamie and others in the leadership. And our services are around research, advisory, consulting, and of course, events. If you haven't been to a Gartner event in Orlando, you need to, because there'll be about fifteen thousand other people there with you every year in Disney World. So we drive business impact. We have distinct assets that we bring to the table. We do custom analysis, which is some of the work that we're doing here. We bring a lot of deep industry expertise. Myself personally, I've done six ERPs across the globe. I've probably done twenty with clients at this point. And between Chris and Paul, there's probably another forty or so public safety and legal implementations that they have both worked on. As I mentioned before, I'm the managing partner with Georgia, and I work with other managing partners and analysts across the board. So why consulting, why Gartner Consulting? We are the ones who develop the industry-leading insights. We are the ones that when vendors don't get a high rating from us, their stock takes a hit on Wall Street because we're agnostic. We're not looking at a vendor because of who you are, we're looking at what you do and what you say you can do for the marketplace. We consider ourselves the world's authority on IT, and this is backed up by the way Wall Street looks at our research rigor. Gartner Consulting services are fueled by our research. We are objective, we're independent, and we offer a global view. So Gartner's advice tends to be business-driven. We're not worried about the widget. We're not worried about the shiny ball at the top that everybody's looking at. We're worried about the process that it enables. So Gartner enables the business to deliver upon its services. So if we look at the evaluation, currently facing significant challenges with workload, data management, and operational processes within Clayton County's current jail system mechanisms. The jail system is beyond capacity, both literally and with the jail population figuratively, in terms of technical ability. If you speak to the folks that are in here from the jail system, they'll tell you that there's a lot of opportunities for systems to talk to each other. They don't currently today. The current system does not have the functionality and workflow and guardrails that we're seeing with other clients. As I mentioned before, some of the people that are in your current system come from other systems. And they told us, as we went around doing the assessment, we can do better. There's absolutely ways to do this better. The mainframe, which is your core system, is called CPU eight. To be honest, it's a green screen technology, it's outdated. And more importantly, the people who support it are not around anymore. So you guys are sitting on a system that literally is on the verge of being obsolete. So what we did is we peeled the onion back, so to speak. We got a tour of the jail, we went and sat down with the judges, we went and sat down with the magistrate, the sheriff's office and things along those lines. We looked at the workflow, everything from jail processing to adjudication to case management and things along those lines. And we identified a lot of opportunities. Most importantly, we identified what we think is the best fit for Clayton County going forward. So the recommendations will come primarily around the modernization of the jail support and jail court operations. There is no single solution. There is not a magic wand that we can wave here and say, guys, you need to buy this system or buy that system. It quite simply doesn't exist, not for Clayton County. You guys are complex enough where you actually require a number of systems, but you require them to work and speak to each other. So our recommendation is diced into three areas. We are recommending two systems, the jail management system and the case management system. And more importantly, we're integrating a data integration hub associated with them. The integration hub will serve the purpose of communicating with the various systems that speak to the operations today. So how Clayton County approaches these three initiatives will determine its success and the ability for Clayton County to address the challenges faced by jails and courts. I can tell you personally, my tour of it, I just saw screaming opportunity for efficiencies. And you know that a lack of efficiency translates into cost, translates into risk. So Gartner proposes adopting a comprehensive programmatic approach for modernization, which encompasses both JMS, CMS initiatives under a unified program supported by the data integration hub. The funding and timelines of these initiatives can be independently sought and managed. And while the immediate challenges are more pronounced with the jail, addressing these issues solely through JMS enhancements will not fully resolve the underlying operational efficiencies. By integrating CMS improvements and leveraging the data integration hub into the same program, Clayton County can ensure that a holistic solution aligns with the entire justice process. So what does this mean as far as timeline and cost? Well, as we look at this, we're in the process right now of working with Clayton County IT on developing and building out the RFP. You had somebody here from Central Services momentarily, and that's one of the things that we do. We actually work with procurement and Central Services to build out the RFP, so they won't have to reinvent anything. And more importantly, because we're doing this with other agencies throughout the Atlanta area, we work every day with DOAS, Jager and a few others. So we understand the prerequisites and the mandatory components associated with an RFQ. So we will help them build that out, and we will provide the expertise that the vendors need to respond to. That's where we are. So if we look at this timeline going forward, we're talking about an initiative that's probably three to four years at least to get done. Why? Because it is significant, it is complex. And Paul, I don't know if you have any more that you want to speak to on this?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. You see here, there's three different streams, right, and they equate to the three different systems. Obviously, the data integration hub and one of the systems need to come in pretty much around the same time. So we can put a new system in, replace a legacy system, like for instance, the JMS in the jail, and have the jail system still talk to some other systems that you have. The courts are in the middle here. They could be implemented all at the same time or staggered in some function, right? One court before the other one. They could also happen earlier, which is a message that I want to leave you with. So all this could happen in over a couple of quarters, pretty much at the same time, with proper guidance, change management, all that good stuff, right, that comes with the large investments. And Noel will talk in a moment about dollars with you. I will say that waiting with this gives you a couple of gifts that are not all that great, frankly. I wouldn't recommend them. Waiting with any of this will mean that you keep investing in legacy, obviously, right, for quite some time. You will also not begin realizing savings, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We actually saw quite a good potential for cost savings in all this that amounts, once it builds up over the years, this is a multi-year project, almost six million dollars, or about six million dollars a year. So this, we're not talking about small change. You would push these savings forward. You also lose momentum, because right now, the interesting thing is, we observed is, there's a bit of excitement building around innovation, right, new systems, getting away from green screen and so on. So people will be a little disappointed, I would say. And the other thing is, you might, because you're moving now with a forward-looking approach, and you have speed on this, it almost creates a bit of an accountability issue if you slow down. It's, that just goes with a good deed, right? If you do one, you usually have to do another one. So, sorry.
So we mentioned the various durations of the three areas. Then we start to talk about the costs associated with these. The JMS system is roughly twelve million dollars, the CMS is roughly seven point two, and the data integration hub is about five. So you're talking about something that's in the twenty-four to twenty-eight million dollar range over the life of the project, which is not inconsistent with what we're seeing in other localities as they go through and do this. The good thing about it right now is that the technology has changed significantly since CPU eight. So it's more of an ongoing support environment versus one purchase, getting a bunch of people and sit there and try to programming. You won't be in, you won't be in bed alone anymore, okay? You'll be working with a cloud-based environment that is being fed by multiple other clients across the country. And in doing so, you guys will reap the benefits of constant updates within the environment. So if we look at the jail population, just to look at the numbers, this is what we identified in the short time that we're able to do the assessment. Just on the jail population alone, we think there's about thirteen million dollars in annualized savings that can be derived from replacing the system with the recommendation that we laid out. If you look at the average stay for the environment, we're talking about four point one million dollars in annualized costs associated with the inmate capacity of fifteen hundred and thirty-five inmates today. As that grows, of course, that cost goes up. So the longer you wait, the more it will cost you. And the quicker you put it in, the more it will start to save you as that accelerates up. So reducing the jail population by the lowest ten percent is about six million dollars, and that's extremely conservative, as we see it. Reducing the average stay of an incarcerated individual by a single day represents a potential one-time savings of over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars across the jail population. This could be sustained and realized repeatedly. So as you go through each area and you start to look for savings, this can be easily modeled and built out over time, just from our observations, just from the data that we're able to extract in our assessment. Reduction in overtime, reduction in incidents through better oversight, reduction in waste, minimization of delayed releases, better vision in the jail population, increase in programs and services. And I'm making the assumption here that everybody saw the article that came out a couple of days ago from Governor Kemp as far as how much he's going to be investing in prison systems in the state of Georgia. systems in the state of Georgia. The point there is not so much that that's something for you to go after. The point there is that's on the front of mind of a lot of agencies that we're speaking to. So, additional savings across both projects form the paper reduction and the retirement of the mainframe. So, the risk here, health and safety, failure to meet growth, the technical debt, the siloed operations, which is a big, big, big issue amongst your people on the ground. And then, of course, legal exposure. We ran into a number of situations where the process of jail administration to adjudication went beyond the statutory timelines and people ended up being released, okay? Or legal action was taken that came back into the organization. I apologize. Am I not?
Just, sorry, just speaking to the mic so they can hear you.
Okay, so, let's do that and I don't want to overwhelm. So, the point that I'm trying to lay here is that the persistent inefficiencies and errors expose the county to legal liabilities and that's what we don't want going forward. So, how does the holistic technology and methodology will address all aspects of the future state sourcing for Clayton County? Phase two is what we've proposed, which is beyond the phase one that we've already completed. And in doing so, we will develop the RFP package. We will help with the response support. In other words, when the vendors come in and say, "This is what they can do," we'll come back and say, "Well, why didn't you do it here? Here's what we know you can do, okay? Let's see what you can really bring to the table." We'll help you with the evaluation selection. We will build the evaluation model with your procurement using your mechanisms that are in place. And we, of course, will work with you on the BAFO that goes out. And just as far as contracts are concerned, there's a seed I'd just like to plant with you. You guys are familiar with the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, right? So, you probably deal with one of those every three years. Just to let you know, Gartner deals with 120 of them every month. And I can tell you, as a CIO, they saved me thousands of dollars because they saw things in the agreement that we won't see because we only look at it once every three years. If we look at the phase two timeline that we have currently proposed, it's roughly a 25-week engagement and all of those key activities will be conducted by Gartner as we work with your procurement department to build out the RFP and all of the tasks necessary to get you guys to a decision as far as the vendors that you can use. We've already spoken with Jamie and we spoke with most of the crew as far as going forward, how does implementation support looks like, project assurance look like, IVNV and things along those lines, just to let you know that we take part in all of those activities for other clients that we deal with. Chris, did I pass where you wanted to chime in on?
Okay, maybe just one comment. Sorry, I just wanted to add one comment to the one that Noel made about there's no one solution for you. What we mean by that is there isn't one, someone said how you would have a big enterprise resource planning, your ERP system, major vendor covering all of those functions. What we've found in the industry is you really want to collaborate with a specialist firm. So, there are a number of specialist vendors that other jails across the country have had a lot of success with automating these processes. You'll have noticed with the JMS implementation, we have that broken into two phases. And the reason for that is with your current CPU eight solution, very manual, for all intents and purposes, the way I would describe it is the team supporting that are now having to do everything from design their own door locks, they're having to design their own hinges. Everything is out of date, everything is having to be rebuilt. These new solutions from these vendors will bring you those automations, they'll bring innovations, they bring things like mobile tools and tablets and all of these capabilities which drive those efficiencies right to the front line, make the workplace safer for the officers, make the environment safer for the incarcerated individuals. So, but there are vendors who can do that. And that integration hub is the thing then that ties that together. So, there are vendors out there, a number who are, your peers and partner counties and things have been selecting. That's what I want to make sure that that was clear, that you understood that there are certainly vendors and you don't want to be in a situation where you're custom building anymore and that opportunity presents for itself.
So, let me end this by apologizing. We tend to throw a lot of data at people. That's what we do.
Oh, no, we love data.
Pardon?
We love data.
But are there any questions that I can answer for the commissioner tonight?
Board members, I would like to open up the floor for any discussion or any questions at this time. I'll start over here. Mr. Davis, do you have any questions at this time?
Yes. As far as the scoping goes, has this preliminary project plan already put in line total scoping of the project from the courts, magistrate, both superior? I didn't hear anything or see anything about PD, which is some of it. Is there the input to that process? Have they been considered as well?
Yes, PD is included in the scope of the.
Yeah, I didn't see that. That's why I was asking that. Okay, and I can sell you a CICS book if you need it. I just found one in my library from those green screens.
Brilliant.
So, that's the big thing. And now, is Gartner expanded into doing development or are they still pretty primarily on the research and project scoping?
No, we stay out of development.
So, you're out of that?
Yes, we are primarily on the research advisory and the consulting side. So, I'll give you an example. We're working right now in Atlanta with one of the very largest school system on an ERP implementation. So, they have selected their software vendor, they have selected their systems integrator who's doing the coding and the configuration of the environment. And we're sitting there in the middle for project assurance and we're working directly with the commission. We're making sure that the SI is following the project management disciplines that we've found you must follow for a successful project. We're reporting on the KPIs and the metrics associated with that. We're working directly with APS and building into best practices so that they're not reinventing the wheel for what they're deploying. We're telling them, "Listen, other school systems are doing it this way. Let's look at your AP and AR and your PC卡 process a little bit and make this tweak and that way you can leverage what is available versus trying to have something coded or built in." So, Gartner remains agnostic. We would lose our agnostic moniker if we got into actual development.
Commissioner Hamper?
Okay, well, you've explained, you know, what you all do. You don't actually do the work. You tell us what is needed and then we get companies. So, do you keep a list of companies? If we were to choose someone that's not really good at what we are hiring them to do, would you let us know that?
Yes. Yeah, we are here for Clayton County. We're not here for the vendor. We're not here for the software provider. So, the information that you need as it pertains to technical, technology, we're the research and advisory firm that can bring that data to the table. So, if you guys pick a system integrator that's based right here in Atlanta, okay? And you guys want to use somebody that's based right here in Atlanta that was started up by whoever, we will ask them to meet certain goals and criteria before we turn them over to you for selection. And we'll base that based upon all the others that are in the market and what they're doing with their clients. And then you will decide if you want to take that risk because by default, you're adding in a new layer of risk when you take somebody who hasn't proven themselves and has the data behind it to show.
Now, I know you mentioned police, but what about fire? Would they be included in, I guess, the courts and the sheriff, police?
So, we haven't specifically focused on fire.
No, no, not, but would they have access to whatever it is or whatever they may need?
Oh, from the courts and the JMS system? Yes, it's a security issue at that point. So, depending on the workflows associated with the various departments, they would provide access to those areas that need it.
Now, one of my biggest worry would be with this, and you're giving a timetable, I think you say it's something about over a three-year period or something. I'm not really that much into, you know, the IT and all. I'm always calling, you know, IT. But, systems change so fast.
Right.
So, what if we put all this money in it?
Right.
And then, it's obsolete. Like you say, what we have now is obsolete. I know that.
Well, that's.
So, that's the beauty of going with an out-of-the-box system. If you go with a major corporation, then they have to integrate those changes and new updates with new innovations yearly and that's part of your maintenance agreement when you select a system. So, just because we implement something in, let's say, 2028, by the time we get it implemented, they'll have new upgrades by then and it'll continuously be upgraded probably every year.
Another million and two minutes.
Well, that's part of the maintenance agreement.
That's how they make their money.
Exactly, but it also saves on personnel costs internally. Because right now, we have one full-time FTE position that is maintaining CPU eight and then we have two contract software developers. Once that language is phased out, it's going to be really hard to find new personnel that can do that. So, going with the corporation, you know, they have hundreds of thousands of developers that can make changes and make them quickly.
So, how long does, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am.
No, no, because this is different.
I was going to say, if you look, if you step back and look at it objectively as far as where all the money is going, the investment is going into cloud, right? Software as a service. That's where all of the money has been going over the last 10 years. It has not been going into client-based. You have this box in your environment, you take care of it, you support it, those type of things. That's not where the investment has been going. So, because of this SaaS, you literally get upgrades. The last time I saw the upgrade come out from the ERP side, it's literally every three months, the system gets upgraded, right? So, if GAAP changes, for example, it automatically gets upgraded into the system. If you have a new legislative code that comes down that changes the law, it automatically flows into the system. So, it's one of those things that you are actually at a significant advantage in going with the new technology than trying to maintain the old one.
Okay, so, how long do you all stay around? Is it after the three years or whatever, whenever we pay, do you all continue once we choose a vendor or once that's done, you all step aside?
We're here to ensure that you get the best product, the best value, and the best accomplished implementation possible. Support for that is internal or the systems integrators or wherever you choose to support you going forward. But that's different now because you're in the cloud, right? So, the support providers have changed with the technology and should be a lot less than what the current environment is.
Commissioner Hamper, if I may add to what we just talked about, you know, when the RFP is done and you've selected vendors and solutions and most likely, they're all going to be cloud-based, we will guide you through that implementation process so that those three or four years at your discretion. We do have value realization programs where we do as little as run quality assurance every month or every quarter to make sure everything is on track, right? As these projects unfold. Or it can be as intense as having a project management office that Gartner staffs as well, which is very hands-on and very embedded. That's a big proposition, obviously. So, we offer different ways of getting you all the way to the finish line and into operations in a way that works for you and your budgets once you're alive with all the systems as well. I wanted to add something to your question earlier. You asked about, well, legacy, when is it going to be outdated, the new things coming around? The bigger picture really is that 30, 40, 50 years ago, everyone was doing mainframes, right? Every county was doing integrated systems, one system, every agency had access and so on and so forth. Nobody did anything else because there was nothing else feasible. Now, with the web, we got into multi-tier architecture and now lots of different technologies, browsers and so on. So, now what you have, you can actually, as Noel pointed out, you can have a system that lives up there in the cloud. It could be private or public with Amazon or, you know, Microsoft or whatever. And it can be updated and maintained over time. It can change under your feet. Can I look what they have when you have apps on your phone now? They change as things get pushed out. So, those, what that has led to is that specific agencies and functions, prosecution, defense, limited jurisdiction court, general jurisdiction court, right? The sheriffs, detention facilities, investigations, all kinds of other things, fire services, for example, as well. There have been best-of-breed applications that have come up and do only that. And that's why nobody today, there is not a single system anymore that covers everything. It's all best-of-breed, it's all about specific functionality for that particular audience and then they integrate with each other, if that helps.
So, the systems.
Yeah.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Allen?
No questions.
All right, Commissioner Reeves?
Oh, yes, I had a question for Director, I don't want to mispronounce your name, I realize I've never said it out loud. All right. Okay, so, just going back about the timeline. So, this process was started in 2020 to try to in-house create this program and then...
Yes, ma'am. So, in 2015, actually, we started SPOS project to replace the courts and jail management system. That was with Tyler Technologies. Unfortunately, that project failed. And so, after that project failed, it was then decided that we would upgrade our current in-house system with a new in-house developed, software-developed system. So, if, honestly, if you want to go back, we've been through this process since 2015.
Okay, so, in a larger perspective, to look through the timeline of, you know, four years, you know, this has already been almost 10 years in the making?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that context. And then I had a question for... Okay, thank you. Okay, so, in the integrated, in the integration hub, on page nine, it talks about coordinating with the justice partners and I'm just looking back because the in-house program that you are working on also included, or was looking at jury selection? Is that something that will also be included in?
Yes, ma'am.
In the court management system? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The goal here is not to leave systems out. The goal is to have the best-of-breed processes captured within the best-of-breed systems. For example, we spoke to the lady who does nothing but control the commissary access for the inmates. And it's a system that's totally outside of the normal system today. And any information from that has to be manually picked up and walked to a different part of the building and entered into the system. Now, imagine if somebody doesn't have their commissary privileges and how they react, okay? Guess what happens on a regular basis? Going forward, these systems will go through the dinner integration hub, they will be told when you will speak to everybody else, how you should speak to everybody else, and when somebody in the system is looking to see whether or not this inmate has their commissary privileges, they'll see exactly how much, when and where is available. That's the beauty of being able to integrate through the integration hub.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions, board members? All right, thank you, Ms. Montalvo.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, it is time to wrap it up. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We don't need one.
We didn't do it.
Well, we don't have to do that part. Okay, so, we can go on that. Okay, good, 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 good. All right, we don't need a motion, so everybody, you all go home and have a good night.